Sherry, how are you?
I'm good. How are you, Dory?
We're hopeful. We're ever hopeful, Dave. Although we've invited them to attend the meeting as guests. And in the event that they're approved, then... They both seem to be solid citizens.
To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is a prayer for attention. Dear heavenly Father, Creator of all that was, is, and will be, we come before you with troubled and tired hearts knowing we have a sin. He never moved you from our public and private places. Squandered your gifts, broken your laws and love. United our hearts and voice, we ask that you receive our gifts. Almighty Father, renew our trust in your presence. Guide us to restore the image of our faith, in our love and respect for each other. It's all through us, in your holy word. Open our hearts to the Lord, to the divine will, to direct our every thought toward him. In you we trust, Father, son, and holy Spirit. Strengthen us to live our faith, one nation under God, indivisible, in the spirit of justice for all. Our priestess, Angel Fire, said that every week before the election.
Good morning, all. I'll make a few comments. I do not do this. This is my last meeting as the chairman this afternoon or this morning yet after outside of our meeting. We will elect a new chairman for the coming year. And I hear applause from some of my commissioners. But at the same time, I would like to thank you guys for supporting me this year. It's been a challenging year, as we all know, and I really appreciate the support you have given me, the guidance and keeping me on track with my parliamentary procedure. And for, I often do not use my filters. So for those in crowd, I apologize if I may have said something out of line. All in all, it's been a challenging year. I do enjoy a challenge, but I think this kind of tested me. So having said that, thank you for the guys, thank you guys for the opportunity to serve as your chairman.
Chairman, might I comment? I appreciate your leadership. I know you do a tremendous amount behind the scenes, which we are not even aware. So I appreciate your good humor because I know it hasn't been an easy year. So thanks very much, Dwayne.
Dwayne, I'd also like to show my appreciation for your great work this year. I know it was a challenge. I kept thinking, boy, am I glad he's got that job and not me. It's on.
Well, nobody expected what we went through this year. So it was a challenge to our community, to our staff. By the way, I would like to thank our staff off the bottom. You guys stood the battleground and done really, really well. Very proud of the staff and all the efforts you guys have put in.
Mr. Chairman, I'll echo the fellow commissioners. Job well done. Appreciate your dedication. And a lot of people don't realize that any kind of commission makes more than an hour a month on Monday. And actually, there are several meetings each week and takes dedication. So we thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
And Mr. Chairman, I'd be remiss if I didn't add my thanks. No question, there's challenges, there were challenges. You were up to the challenges and we appreciate that. I, the only thing that disturbed me during this last year was that clock that you had started each time that I... But I, I respect that and I understand why it came out. So, but again, in all sincerity, thank you very much for your leadership.
Again, I thank you guys for your support. We really appreciate it. Let's get on with today's business. Gentlemen, we have a agenda for approval.
Mr. Chairman, I would offer a motion first to approve our agenda as presented.
Cliff, for seconds.
All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Now the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve all items on the consent agenda.
Second.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Dr. Clifford, point of order that the Community Development Block Grant report. I have a lot of questions on that. I wonder if we might discuss that before we vote. I don't want to take it off the agenda, but I thought maybe they would be here today.
Dory, could you pull that or put that report on our screen, your parts of it, or any particular part?
Yeah, let's, let's just go down to the end. I don't know if any of you all did the math on this like I did. They give us one of their amortization schedules. I can't tell you where that is in the, in the pagination, Dory, I'm sorry. But you all know what I'm talking about.
It's page seventeen of our agenda, I believe.
Thank you, Lon.
Page seventeen, please.
I believe that's right.
And these, I was a little surprised that these were half percent loans. I know we approved them, but I'll have to admit a little bit of ignorance about the percentage rate because in the past, loans out of this fund have been in more of a market rate, like four percent. I'm sure it was something Congress weighed in on. But if you go to the two examples above that, you have Steam Action Restoration, which I assume is page fifteen, and you have Garden City Taxi LLC, both borrowing thirty-five thousand dollars. The Garden City Taxi drew on September twenty-eighth. Keep that in mind as I explain this, okay? The end of September. The Steam Action drew on August eighteenth. So there's about a month apart on the draw. They didn't have to pay for a year, based on what I read on these forms. They didn't have to pay until 2021, but both decided to start paying a little bit early. Garden City Taxi paid four hundred a month, or a hundred a month, made four payments, four hundred dollars. Their thirty-five thousand dollar loan is negatively amortized to thirty-five thousand, three fifty-seven, fifty-three. So they, they've, somewhere in there, there's, they didn't pay the interest, although at fourteen dollars and fifty-eight cents a month, to me, it was more than paid, okay? So I don't get the math on that. And here we have Steam Action Restoration, and they only paid forty-nine dollars and nine cents. I think about sixteen dollars a month, and they negatively amortized to thirty-five thousand, three hundred and eight, forty-four. So the same loan amount drawn six, five weeks earlier, paying a tenth of what someone else paid, forty-nine versus four hundred, and yet their negative amortization amounts are nearly the same. In fact, the one who paid less owes less, the one who paid more owes more. So I, I, I don't know if you want me to call this organization separately? And, and I could go into all the other ones, too. I do not understand their math at all. Well, the amortization schedule for Garden City Taxi is similar. It's, it's interest only. So, and, and you can look back to, there's another one where they paid four thousand dollars in, in principal and interest, yet their loan amount they owe went up. So I'm not sure who's doing the books. I, I question the accuracy. And so I know we're voting to accept this report, but I was hoping Robert or somebody with a little more accounting background than I would be here today. But I, I cannot accept this report based on numbers that, that do not make any sense.
Would you like to pull that off of this consent agenda till further study?
I know we have a motion already for the approval of the consent agenda, but if Dave would accept amendment, I would like to pull this item off for review at a future meeting.
I'm with amended the motion to, with the exclusion of that item.
I don't have a problem either.
That's a motion and a second. I'll take a vote. All those in favor of amendment to withdraw the report until further discussion, say aye.
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 Motion carried. Now the motion to approve the consent agenda.
Without that item, I would so move.
Clifford, take a second.
That motion has already been on the floor, so we'll... Original, original motion.
Save a second.
It did. Is that's correct, Dory? Did we not have a motion in a second right off the start on the consent? Okay. All those in favor of the consent engine, approving the consent agenda as amended, signify by saying aye.
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 Motion is carried. To address that, we can have a, on a next meeting to... Join the next meeting. Okay, thank you. Public comment. Now we have a very sparse crowd and don't know what you're after. So we will just finish with public comment. New business, Fannie County Aging Board appointments. Sherry, would you want to address us on that?
Will I be the step up?
Yep, please.
Good morning. I won't take much of your time. We need to replace two board members. Unfortunately, Bob Spurling passed away late in 2020. He succumbed to the, to the COVID. And then Susan Burkhardt doesn't wish to, to be reappointed. She and her husband are retiring and contemplating Arizona, where their grandchildren are. So I have two folks to nominate. One is Nathan Heck. Nathan is a minister at the Church of the Nazarene. Nathan contacted us, expressing interest. He wants to give back to the community in ways that, that he can. He's very interested in our senior population, wants to know more about transit. Nathan moved here from, I think Indiana, I'm not sure. Missouri last summer, so, okay. And then Carol Hotchild. Carol and Darrell, her husband, live here in Garden City. Carol's a retired nurse. They both volunteer at the Fannie County Humane Society. Equally important to us is Carol is a very active member of the Senior Center. She hosts the Southwest Kansas Dancers website. So Carol would be that board member who's active at the center, who knows what's going on, who knows what people want. So those are the two nominees we have. Both would be three-year terms. Bob's term was expiring and Susan's term is expired. So that's what we have for you today.
Mr. Chairman? Well, my only question is, and I understand Nathan reached out to you, Carol's familiar to you. Have you had any other interest in board positions expressed to you? Or has the board searched out and, or reached out and searched for others? Just a, just a process question.
Okay. We did try to kind of reach out to, to others that we thought might be interested. In particular, we had one of the drivers from the Fannie County Transit who was interested. And the board made the decision that that would be a conflict of interest with him as an active employee to be a Fannie County Committee on Aging Board member. Told him as long as he was an employee, we wouldn't be able to consider him. But if at any time we had an opening and he was not an employee, we would be happy to consider him. That was the only other formal inquiry that we had.
Mr. Chairman, their Fannie County Committee on Aging meeting is tomorrow afternoon at one-thirty. They have sent out their agenda and their packet. I received that. I noticed in that that they're hopeful because they have these two folks being sworn in as members. So with that in mind, in order to help their hopefulness, I'll offer a motion to approve their two nominees, Nathan Heck and Carol Hotchild.
Clifford, seconds.
Thank you. Further discussion on the nomination and appointments?
I know Carol really well. She'll, she'll be a fantastic board member. And I know the minister is, is quite enthusiastic. We've met him here and like his work already.
And Mr. Chairman, my only comment is I'm, I'm aware of the, the transit driver that is being referenced. And I'm not promoting or supporting any particular candidate. I'm not opposed to these two people in any way. But if I heard you correctly, that's not a written policy. That's, that's a, that's a decision the board made. And, and I would suggest that if that is something that they deem important, that it be a written policy because I think we could be called on that.
Mr. Chairman, I'll point out that that's not the first time that a paid employee sought membership on a, on a governing committee. And that's not the first time that was denied. You do have some folks who are volunteers on other committees that are on that board. One anyway I can think of or two. But that's not deemed a conflict. And I don't disagree, Lon, maybe that needs to be written in your, in your rules or your procedures manual. But otherwise, I, I would still offer my motion to approve the two who are suggested.
We do have a motion and a second to accept these two individuals. Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, opposed? Motion is carried.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your support.
Thank you, Sherry.
Thank you.
We have another board appointment on our agenda? And for the life of me, I cannot read out what all those acronyms stand for, would you?
So this is the Fannie, Fannie Childcare and Early Learning Network?
That's, I knew that. I knew that. It's been brought to my attention that our administrator, Robert Reese, might be interested in that position. And since he's not here to defend himself, I would be glad to put his name up for nomination.
Question before you go on. I'm just looking at the list. You have representatives from the college and four, five, seven, but none from three, six, three.
Good point.
Yeah, I noticed that as well.
So I don't, I don't know if that would be something we might want to consider or...
Well, you guys tell me.
I don't, I don't, I don't have a name in mind. I've just...
I, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. We don't have a, an obligation to make that appointment today, do we? Okay. I would suggest that we put this on our February first agenda, that we visit with Robert briefly and take into account what Larry just mentioned about three, six, three. But I don't know either what their bylaws are and so forth, whether there could be a Fannie County rep and a three, six, three rep, or if this is the maximum number of board members. So I, I think we need to research it just a little bit and make our decision on the first of February.
There, there's ten on the board currently, right? If I'm counting right. And one more would make it an odd number.
Ten, yeah. I, but I don't know what their bylaws say.
I don't either.
So I just think we need...
Maybe we need to look into a little more.
Because I think it would be good to have three, six, three. I also think Robert would be a good representative as well. So I, I just think February first would be a better date to make that decision after a little research.
Is that a consensus?
Yes.
Okay. So noted. Next on our agenda is our Sparks Grant Program update, and I saw... That I don't know anything about. I just...
Well, I think, I think that was a misprint. If I, if I read that right, it's the childhood board that we were pointing to. Isn't that correct? It's right, it's on the agenda itself. It's, it's on the agenda itself that, I think it's a misprint.
And to Jeff, I offer my apologies for interrupting you.
All right. Be quiet, Dave. Jeff, your turn. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, commissioners. How are you all today?
We're doing great.
The, appreciate your, your meeting, and I wanted to be here in person so I wasn't accidentally nominated for a board in Fannie County as well. A couple of brief updates that we have. We're continuing to, to work on the closeout items as requested. You know, there is in the agenda packet, a full description of all of the expenses and where they have been sent thus far. We're continuing to work with Robert or the team to solidify all the expenditures and make sure those pieces have been included. Couple of things that came up at the end of last year with the signing of the, with the signing of the new stimulus bill, there was emergency rental assistance included in that. And the state of Kansas received funding for that. So I've got a, a reach out to Doug Gerber at the state. He's going to connect us with the, the state housing office that's overseeing those funds to see how they might interact with any of the HHR programs, the household emergency relief dollars that we're trying to utilize. And see, you know, just to make sure that there's no duplication of benefits. Or if we could also tap into those funds to support some of, you know, the future endeavors under that program. So we'll still, we'll, we'll hear back as soon as Doug's able to connect us in a Zoom. We've gone back and forth trying to connect on a time. But we're continuing to, to work with the team to get the HHR, the county-funded HHR program up by February first. That is our target date. We have a meeting later today on some of the kickoff items to make sure that we can get prepped for the money. There's going to be some slight changes to the application. Nothing substantive, but just kind of lessons learned from the last time. An example is collecting some of the mortgage and landlord information on the front end versus the back end. And removing some of the questions that were extraneous. So we're really trying to tighten up the application so that it's a little bit more focused, working with Roxanne and her team to make sure that everything is, is very focused for those applications.
Jeff, I might comment for the commission. I was at the Sparks update Thursday and Roxanne went, you know, she's the one that's got stuck with administering this thing locally. And she went through quite a little list of what she would like tweaked. And I thought those were very good ideas, which you just mentioned, Jeff.
Yeah, and, and we had had a lot of them already. And I know her and Julianne have a, have had subsequent meetings and are tweaking the application. You know, our goal really on this next round is to, you know, take the lessons learned that we, we had in the first round and streamline it so that assistance is getting a lot more, you're getting out on the street a lot faster than it has been. I think some of the changes that we discussed, you know, authorizing Robert to do it on a weekly basis will allow us to kind of expedite some of that funding. We're giving access to some of the CPB staff into the application portal, which really will help aid us in getting those, those missing documentation pieces a lot faster and speeding aid to make sure that things get on the street. So, and just to kind of give you a big picture idea, we have a change in administration, obviously tomorrow, that one of the big things that was announced in last week by the Biden transition team is an idea of additional state and local aid. That still has to wait its way through Congress and, and everything else. But I would encourage all of you to think about how, you know, if you would, if additional monies come, how do we want to strategically spend those dollars? We've had some good conversations with the staff and some of the commissioners on our Thursday meetings. But also would, would throw it out to you all as well. And to start thinking about, you know, where strategically would you like to position Fannie County? I think in many ways, the state of Kansas, I don't have any firm indications of this, but just thinking universally, I think we'll see similar programs, both on the federal level, pushing down to the state of Kansas, and the state of Kansas riding the rails of the Spark program. So if we can think about now, you know, what are those maybe larger economic development projects? Or, you know, things that advance the resiliency of Fannie County? Or, you know, those response items that maybe we didn't get the chance to address in this round of funding, that we may want to do it in the future. So I'll just throw that out, you know, and the more shovel-ready projects that we can have, like the Fiber Project, which I think was a massive success, you know, the, the better off that will be. like the Fiber Project, which I think was a massive success, you know, the better off that will be.
All right, questions for Jeff? Lon?
I don't have any questions, but I know Melinda from the city is here and I didn't know if the city might have any questions about what Jeff is suggesting. And I, the other piece is, I didn't know whether we should be scrolling through some of this online, some of this report online, and I guess that would go back to Jeff.
This report is, I understand it is the complete documentation of what was approved. We've all seen it. This is also a copy of the report, I believe, that was sent to Melinda and at his request. Is that not correct Jeff?
Is this the report that?
This is the report that.
This is the report that is meeting Matt's request and sharing it out to everybody, you know, and that's where we wanted to make sure that that was dealt with. I, I would ask, I'm not 100% sure if it was sent to Matt directly, but I know being included in the agenda, that was certainly.
Well, it's in our packet, which is open to the public.
The idea was to publicize it.
They can log on and.
Yeah, mine was all just simply in the spirit of transparency and whether or not Melinda had any questions from a city perspective.
Why the list? And I appreciate all that work you guys have done for that.
Yeah, I, I think in the overalls, you know, this list kind of details out how, you know, how successful and how inclusive the projects have been in trying to get, you know, pieces and for everybody and advance, advance the county's goals and efforts.
Now, the, the household account is still open till end of March, right?
So the, the decision that we made Commissioner, I think, was to receive the money through public safety salaries and then use some of those funds to expend with county funds, using, you know, the household program. So we can leave it open for six months, I think that was the vote last time, was six months, $250,000 of seed money. So that'll be, you know, again, we're targeting February 1st for the launch, just so that we can, you know, adjust those items that we've talked about. But we'll be sharing it out from there.
And for the public's benefit, to be clear, if you are in that group of people who can use these funds, please get ahold of Roxanne at the conventioners and visitors and her, her people are running this program for us. So those in the public know somebody who could benefit from this program, please, please reach out to those. That's staff.
Yeah, we're going to be doing a significant, you know, kind of public relations push and messaging push as soon as the program launches. So, you know, the application will be web based again and Roxanne's team will be there supporting, to, to support folks as it goes through.
Mr. Chairman, I think Melinda may have some comments or questions.
I have one question for you Jeff. In looking at that document, I was wondering what the grand total is and what money is still available to be dispersed out of the original 10.8 million that you received?
Let's see, Robert Reese is logged in. Robert, I don't know if you can hear or respond to the question?
Yes, I'm online. If I remember correctly, I believe we were somewhere around that 9.5 million in expenditures that we submitted to, on our January 6th statement to the state of Kansas. And once again, that was a unaudited amount. We still had a few expenditures still looming out there, some related to the Fiber Project, some stragglers as it related to some business reimbursements and household reimbursements. And if I remember correctly, we would anticipate that, that that number will, will settle somewhere around that 1.3 million dollars. And just by way of point here is that I did have a brief conversation with Matt this morning about the information, I know he's, he is offline today, so anyway, I did touch base with him earlier this morning on the report.
Jeff, when do you anticipate the final reconciliation for that 1.3? Is that probably by the end of the month or are we still a little bit away? Mr. Reese mentioned we have some straggling invoices coming in. Would you look to clear this up?
I think we're, we're trying to target the, the end of the month, the best that we can. Maybe lead into the first week in February, but you know, right now, as per this report, you know, there's, we're tracking 9.42 million. That, you know, that's all the pieces, as Robert indicated, you know, there's some, some final pieces to clean up, but our team is working to close that out. So we should, we should have it here in the very near future Commissioner.
Thank you.
Thank you. Clifford?
Jeff, Bill Clifford, thanks for answering my question about the February date. I spent a lot of time searching for the portal for Household Emergency Relief, thinking it was going up last week and not finding it, I wondered. But those of us who are familiar with the Fannie County website know how to dig into it and find where it was before. I'd like us to banner it or somehow have it on the first page. And that's something internal, but as, you know, you're discussing this with Roxanne, for citizens, I think they need a button or an instant connection to it. Because before it was kind of, you know, you know how we, we rolled it out with the three different phases and programs, so I'd appreciate some consideration to make it easier for citizens.
I will, I'll mention that into the team today.
Hey, anything further from Jeff? Any more comments, Jeff, from your side?
No, nothing more on my side, Commissioner.
All right, again, once again, we thank you and your staff so much for all the attention to this paperwork and administration of this program and have yourself a great week.
Hey, you too, thank you.
Okay, I think I saw Colleen whip through here, did she run right back out? There she is, she's coming. Good morning, Colleen, I'm going to ask for your report.
Hello, good morning. All right, update for the last couple of weeks on total number of cases. So for December 27th through January 2nd, we had a total of 116 positives. We had our 31% positivity rate and an average of 12 hospitalizations. Of course, you know, that is down significantly from our high points in the last couple of months. So much improved there. From January 3rd through January 9th, we had 148 positives. So definitely an increase from the 116 before. Our positivity rate was 30%, so we have seen it kind of maintaining around that 30% mark, which is much better than the 40% that it was ranging in the several weeks prior to that. And an average hospitalizations of 13. So far from my last look on the most recent data for hospitalizations, we are averaging around 12 hospitalizations a week on the most present week. Of course, we are moving into kind of our second phase of pandemic response, which is COVID vaccine. We have been able to coordinate with the state several transfers of vaccines with local partners. We are doing a lot of onsite vaccination clinics for businesses. We are still finishing up the remainder of Phase 1. Next week, we will be giving second doses to the beginning, that first week of vaccines and all the organizations that we did in that first week. Because you have to wait until 28 days after the first dose to administer the second dose. So next week, we'll be coordinating on that. This week, we are still working to really make sure we identified everyone within Phase 1 and finishing up some of those outliers or clinics that just have smaller numbers of people to then coordinate those vaccinations. So that's kind of what we're working on now. We are also collaborating with a few other organizations to look at a collaborative approach and larger scale vaccination process. I don't have any specifics to announce just yet, but that's something that we are actively working on as we know that that'll be the next phase of vaccination when we have larger inventory numbers to move through. So stay tuned on that, we will have more information coming about that. Of course, Phase 2 will be several broad categories. Some of the highlights there, first responders, so police, police, sheriff, highway patrol, firefighters, those first responders, and then school district, so teachers. There's also a pretty broad category agriculture that's in there. So we're going to be working with probably several other entities to coordinate several of those efforts. Those are kind of preliminary information, as we navigate through this plan, we're going to continue to update where we are. We're also coordinating with another couple of organizations to do an online enrollment form, but also a way that if people are not handy with computers or aren't able to navigate that website, where they will call to then have somebody help guide them to the enrollment form. So we have several kinds of things in the works with COVID vaccine response and that's about all I have for general updates.
One of the common questions people want to know, are you getting a steady supply of vaccines and/or is it pretty erratic?
It's infrequent. Not knowing how many doses we'll have and then also shipment details of when we will have them makes it a little bit more problematic. Today, I did have an update from the state that we would receive an extra shipment the middle of this week or late this week, it's still unclear. But we're basically finding out the week of or when they show up at the door, that's when we know that we have vaccines. So it, it is part of kind of the frustration to the process to navigate through and it kind of affects our planning and how we're receiving the vaccines.
Dave?
Colleen, the coffee shop gang continued to ask each of us, I'm sure, what's the process to get on the waiting list, if you will? Do they need to call and sign up? General announcement, can you kind of clear that up for us?
So we don't really have a formal waiting list for the 65 and older. Well, what we are looking to do is accomplish that with that online enrollment form so that then some of the names that we have taken and some of that contact information will go onto that online enrollment form. So we're working on that process, so that'll be coming out as soon as possible so that people, the 65 and older's can go on and register themselves to enroll in receiving a vaccine. So that, that will be coming. We don't have a formal process of tracking this waitlist, kind of a concept, but a few that have reached out to me personally or had questions, we've taken down information from them. But we're going to then have to turn in to creating an enrollment form for those people and contact them to fill out all of that information. So it would be helpful for people to be patient until we get that form and that formalized process released.
Okay, and then a second question, I think I have three.
Yes, sir.
Is if, I'm going to use a, for instance, for instance, you can go to Dillon's Pharmacy and get about four or five different vaccinations. So the question is, has anybody thought about having a supply of COVID immunizations over at the Dillon's place and that could help you out?
So I believe all of that is being coordinated through the state efforts to contract with local vendors to also help in the vaccination process, but those larger inventory centers so far have gone to FQHCs across the state and then local health departments. But I believe that as more become available, you'll see an expansion on vaccine clinics. So they would have to be an approved vaccination site with the state. So it's just a matter of enrolling and then having the inventory to give.
And my final question is perhaps more of a comment. There are a number of people, probably of all ages, who do not have access to internet.
Yes, sir.
So somehow, and I think the school system trying to identify where their, their students are is a pretty good indication. Last I heard, I think they're like 17% of their kids, they have no idea where, where they are. I expect that's kind of the case with those who need to be considered for vaccination. It's going to be some pretty high percentage, there's no way to contact them other than, than perhaps print media would help, but you're never going to get all of them.
Sure.
My comment.
What we're working on communications wise and of course with Maggie, is developing that communication plan of how we will push out the information to register and then if they can't register online, where to access that phone number so that somebody on their behalf could enter an enrollment form and then give them all the pertinent instructions that they need. So some of the first things that we have identified is of course newspaper, radio, our website, COVID Hub, flyers with other clinics. So we have a communication list serve who then shares that out. Of course, Livwell Health Coalition will share out that information. So we're really trying to define all routes of communication to get that information out. As we move into Phase 2, that opens up a significant amount of organizations that will be able to receive vaccine, so it'll be a pretty large process to navigate through.
Well, I applaud your efforts, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yes, Colleen, I appreciate your responses to me as I've emailed you and requested information, but I'd like to drill down a little bit on, on what's on the ground in Fannie County. And I'll give you my understanding, is that we had 150 doses here in our health department. The hospital had maybe 300 to 500, I don't know the top end of that number. And I was aware of Genesis having 1,000 doses. Can, can you update me roughly on what amount of vaccine has made it to Fannie County? To the best of your knowledge, beyond those numbers?
Beyond those?
Has the health department received any more than 150 from the state?
Yes, we've received a transfer, so the state coordinated a transfer from Genesis of that original 1,000 to the health department to continue vaccinating Phase 1 so that we could collaborate that effort together. Genesis is, I believe, now doing second dose for their first set of 1,000. And they have received their second, so they've received their second shipment of that 1,000 to do the second doses on that first 1,000. Of that first 1,470 were transferred to health department, but then we had to transfer another 120 to three other counties. So then we had 350 of that. We now have another 350 transferred from Genesis today for that amount that we transferred out as well to the area, area counties. And we're supposed to receive another 300 this week. If you follow all that, it gets complicated with the transfers, but we're also moving vaccines around.
And are you aware of the hospital receiving any more doses, beyond the second doses?
I do not recall from our meeting on Friday, the exact number update from the hospital, if they received more. We were talking about looking at a collaborative effort where we put our vaccines together and then do a mass vaccination. So I'm unsure of how that will work out. I do have another update call with hospital, Livwell and Genesis tomorrow as well.
And? What percent of vaccines that made it to the county do you think are out there in arms? We put 50% of those out between health department, Genesis and the hospital?
Yes, mainly because we're gearing up for that second dose. So you could look at essentially 50% of what we've received has gone out and then we're gearing up for that second dose of that initial.
And, and when you say mass vaccination, are you, are you talking about like a drive through facility to get this done? I realize there, there would have to be stages, paperwork, identification, vaccination, observation. What do you envision, back to the fairgrounds, what's, what are you thinking?
So we are steering away from a drive through method, mainly. So we are steering away from a drive-through method, mainly because of also the 15 minutes of monitoring patients for any allergic reactions afterwards. So logistically, it would make sense for us to use a larger building, have registration, have a vaccination and a waiting area, of course, spread out socially distanced, masked, all of the precautions to make it a safe place. So we are looking at more of a walk-in type of a method.
And I think that's the proper thinking. I would hope the large facilities, like the college or the school system, would provide places like that. And so you bring up the point about masking, and I don't like the muffling, so I have my mask down, but I've received both vaccines, as you know, and I'm probably well on my way to that 95% level of protection. But I think citizens need to understand, we still may be carriers, even though I'm asymptomatic. And so we have to continue to protect those who opt out. Hopefully we can reduce that number. And we definitely have to protect those who are unable to take the vaccine. So this is going to be several quarters still this year, at least the first two, maybe the third, until we can think about relaxing, social distancing, mask wearing, and our hygiene standards. I do think some of that has really helped us. I mean, flu, the CDC stats I looked at, flu is a 10th of what it normally is. Respiratory syncytial virus is like 100th for little kids, because the little kids aren't going out. So, I mean, preschoolers. So, you know, these methods have actually helped us on transmission of other normal seasonal viruses. So I applaud your work. I know it's never fast enough for our citizenry, but since the supply things are now being worked out, I think expeditiously we need to get that vaccination station going. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Colleen, who determines when you leave Phase One to Phase Two?
The state. The state wants us to coordinate Phase One across the state as a whole and move to Phase Two as a whole. They coordinated a transfer of vaccines from other counties that had administered to all of Phase One, so that other counties that were still finishing Phase One could have more vaccine availability. So they would like us to travel into Phase Two together.
Okay. Also, I noticed you mentioned in Phase Two ag workers. So have you been in touch, or has the Tyson people been in touch with you? Because, you know, for doing mass vaccinations, that would be a place I'd start there, and the schools would be simple, I think.
Sure. So Tyson has a route directly with the state to do mass vaccination of their employees, and they should have, I believe, vaccines in the next several weeks to begin vaccinating in February as well.
So they won't be going through the health department?
Not at this time, from the most recent update. That will be coordinated separately since they have nursing staff there. We did vaccinate their nursing staff that didn't want the vaccine in this first phase to cover the healthcare workers there.
Thank you.
Colleen, thanks again for all you and the health department do with regard to the testing, the vaccine, and everything. Mine are kind of global questions, if you will, just a couple of them. You referenced several times previously and again this morning that some of the vaccines have gone from Finney County to other counties. Can you help me put that in perspective? Is that two or three other counties? Are they contiguous counties? Just help me understand who we're helping with that distribution.
Sure. Our initial shipment of vaccines, we received, and it was a higher number. The state then coordinated with us and said, hey, you're a regional distribution site for these nine other counties.
Nine.
So that initial was nine. The transfer from Genesis was us and three other counties.
Okay.
So then we coordinated that, transferred those to those other three counties.
But the state is mandating what counties you're to assist?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I anticipate that with this 300 that we're supposed to get this week, that some of those are going to be transferred to other counties. So I'm looking for that clarification from the state, too, so that we know how to proceed and what to plan. Some of the shipment that we have is for that initial 500 doses, and we transferred out 350 of those.
Right.
So that will have to be the same nine-county transfer from that initial shipment that we got, too.
Okay.
So we're coordinating a lot of those efforts with the transfers, too, but looking for that clarity from the state to navigate.
Yeah, I just didn't know how that process took place. And then my other question is, are we, is that mobile facility still at the fairgrounds for testing? Is it still ongoing?
Yes, sir.
And is there a sunset date, or do we know how long that facility is going to be available for testing?
It is for sure approved through the end of January. They would like to continue that operation, I believe, through the end of March, at the very least. But they are also coordinating with us an effort on if weather becomes inclement, that they would transfer to possibly an inside location. So there may be some developments. We've coordinated with fairgrounds, staff, and public works to identify locations. So we're still kind of trying to work out those details.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
One more shot, Larry? Just one more comment. This is more a comment than a question, but watching the news, it appears that some states are way, way ahead of us. Is it just because they received their supply sooner, or I don't understand how you have a state that says, we're going to give it to anybody over 65, and they just opened it up, and we're still working with certain class of people, so.
Yes, sir. It's interesting, and here at the local level, we are receiving feedback on that. We are not trying to hold up the process here. We are following the direction of the state in vaccinating and responding as quickly as possible. So it becomes difficult at times when you don't have a for-sure confirmed amount. And I think at state level, it's also difficult because they may not have confirmed amounts of how much they're receiving.
I guess that's the question more for KDHE than you.
We're doing our best here on the local level.
I appreciate it.
It's kind of interesting, yeah.
Well, for the public's perspective, I would point out that other than Dr. Clifford, the commission is not considered essential. We have to wait our turn, just like everybody else. So I hope we're in Phase Two, but maybe we're Phase Five. I don't know. So, Dr. Clifford, congratulations.
65 and older is this next?
Hey, hey, we're there, we're there.
Not to make an age joke, but, you know, it's...
I guess you covered this.
It's not a joke. We're all there.
We're all there.
As a matter of fact.
Except for that one.
One more, yes?
Again, in the interest of local control, the commission will have your back. I'm really disturbed that the state has put a governor, literally and figuratively, on us in the way you're doing this. And if you need to stick your neck out on some of these issues to get it moving for our citizens' sake, this commission will have your back on that. So I appreciate, I appreciate the haste. Thank you.
And as always, we fully support you and your people, what all you've done for Finney County, and great gratitude. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Next on my agenda, I have Mr. Green with an emergency management update.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Just to kind of tack on to what Colleen was referencing, we've identified the fairgrounds as that of testing, or for the testing as well as the vaccination, excuse me, phase, as we progress into that next stage. We've built a pretty good plan, working with Roger's team and Rex's team. So when we're ready to turn that on, I think we're, you know, we're going to forge ahead, and that's going to work out real well. It's going to have a different look and a different feel to it versus what we did initially in the drive-through, just so you know. So I think we're well ahead of our, you know, we have good momentum moving forward with that. So I don't, that transition's going to be pretty smooth, I think, working with Colleen's team. Just one other thing, just so you know, the governor has extended the state disaster relative to the COVID-19. That's been extended through the 26th of this month, and they can extend that on 30-day increments as we progress forward into this emergency. And by doing so, that allows the state to work through their emergency response plan. They can keep their EOC activated, still disseminate information on a daily basis, you know, still provide resources for us to move forward with that, especially when it comes to the health department. We can provide some of those PP resources and testing resources through the state. We go through their procurement process. And that's pretty much where we stand with that. And I would anticipate that update. Each time we get an update, we make sure you guys are advised of that, okay? So that's really where we stand from an emergency management perspective at this juncture. Any questions or anything?
First off, I think that's great that you have the plan in place for, at the fairgrounds, facilities for this. I commend you for those, guys, that. Our new connectivity will help, so.
Yeah, it's, you know, it really is a group initiative, you know, with Roger's team, and we're going to have to engage IT again, so we can do the appointment, the scheduling, things of that nature. And, you know, maybe potentially we could get some additional assistance from the National Guard. We don't know that. It's all speculative at this point. But of course, if we can absorb that, that would be really good, and that would be an asset to our county and our initiative. And that's just talk. We haven't gotten any word like that or anything, so.
Wishful thinking right now.
Yeah, exactly.
This is just a curiosity question, Stephen. Have we had any, well, like, kind of piggybacking to what Colleen's saying, where the state said, we're a regional distribution center, and we're helping these other counties. Have we had any counties reach out to us, neighboring counties, to find out what we're doing from an emergency management perspective with regard to plans like you've just outlined? Or is anyone reaching out to you? Have you had conversations with other counties in our area?
Yeah, not so much as of late. You know, as you know, we participate in a daily conference call with the EOC, and so everybody's kind of aligned with the actions that they're taking and the progress they're moving forward. But initially, when we started our drive-through, counties reached out, and we had several conversations. We built a procedure relative to the COVID response protocol, you know? We had a generic protocol in place for things of this nature. What we did, we reached out and looked at Seattle, King County, and looked at their procedure, and kind of, we took that and kind of tweaked that to how we'd want to do business here in Finney County, kind of aligned it with our existing protocols and whatnot. And we shared that with some of the neighboring counties.
The only reason I asked that question was, I think it's important for people in Finney County to understand how we are helping, and we are a resource to other counties that might need some assistance, might not have all the available manpower and so forth. So I just, I just think it's good for our residents to know that.
Yeah, and we anticipate being a regional vaccination process as well. So we're trying to equip ourselves with that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anything else for Mr. Green? Stephen, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Roger, your turn.
Okay, the future energy solutions amendment. This had to do with added fixtures that we missed in the original audit. And there were some also, not only missed fixtures, but fixtures that weren't working that were added on to this. And then there's adjusted cash rebate in this. We entered into this agreement knowing that we'd have an initial audit and then a follow-up audit to catch the rest of the stuff. That's what this is. I think the final impact is 136, 16 a month. It's what it'll affect, going from 25, 2602 to 238986. That's about all I got on that.
This is kind of the follow-up audit, to the follow-up audit, isn't it?
Follow-up audit, yes.
Now, how long have you had them up and running?
Uh, we've been there about a week and a half, two.
Oh, so you don't, so it'd be a couple of months before you really see any change in the billing?
And they're still in the process, too, if you think about this next audit. Now they have to go back in and replace and change those items also.
Yeah, okay. Can you tell by just walking through the building, there's a difference in lighting, or is it?
Lighting.
Yeah.
Roger, I looked over this agreement, and, you know, because it first struck me as kind of a bait and switch. It's hard to believe that there are over 400 lighting fixtures not working. I mean, have you done your own audit? Do you agree with that? That's what we're being asked to agree to here.
I have.
I mean, I don't see any here. Was this just over at the law enforcement center?
I do.
So, I mean, I can't imagine that Rex is that careless about maintenance. I could imagine it of other managers within the county, but, I mean, I was shocked.
Yeah, and I was, too, honestly. 3G, I think, was who went through it with them. And we've had a lot of success with them in the past, you know, and I trust them.
So we had local folks go through, but might not half of those be turned off because we don't need them, or?
No, I think that is what else they covered. They not only covered hourly use of the lights, like, how many hours a day are these on per day? So you're not going to count 24 hours on these lights. They took into account the natural time used for each light. I think it was a pretty complicated process, especially with the many items that they were.
Yeah, and I understand over there, lights are on probably 24 hours a day in a lot of places, but I just, it just struck me as odd.
Well, there's a whole lot of lights, period, if you look at it in totality of all. There are a lot of lights.
And it increases their, and this is a 15-year deal we signed originally? It increases their take by $50,000. I did the math.
Over that 15-year period?
Over the 15 years, yeah. And ours is, we increase by 8,000. So again, I mean, we, I don't want to micromanage the county. We trust folks like you to do this on our behalf, but, you know, just looking at the paperwork, it didn't pass the smell test for me. I think we were assured by their counties who work with them that this was a reliable outfit. Didn't you bring that to us early on?
Yeah, I can't remember the name of the counties off the top of my head.
We had a few. You'd check with.
One of the counties is a private organization. It's a car wash dealer in Wichita or something like that. There's several different private organizations.
Our savings then, over the 15-year, 150,000. And again, this company, FES, would be 450 to them, so it's...
Seventy-five, twenty-five.
I realize they owned the fixtures. What happens at 15 years? They come and take them all out, or we own them, or? Can you recall what happens after 15?
At 15 years, we basically own the lights. I mean, honestly, they're going to hit us for another agreement in 15 years.
Surely.
We also have a seven-year buyout option on this, too.
There is, okay. I'd forgotten about that. I appreciate, I'm glad 3G was boots on the ground locally, but it just struck me, you know, my wife bugs me about bulbs being out in the house, but I don't have 400 lights out. And I was very surprised by that.
A lot of that ended up being in storage closets and places that people didn't open doors and things like that.
But they'll go back, and every one of those will be working.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
The problem was identified when we initially signed the contract. I signed it somewhat reluctantly. We're making a decision that's going to impact a county commission way down the road that's not sitting here today. And then the question that Commissioner Clifford just asked about the fixtures, some of those have proprietary bulbs in them. So at the end of 15 years, we own a fixture that we can only buy bulbs, perhaps from one company. I'm oversimplifying my example, but isn't that the case? These are not standard fixtures that they're providing to us.
Yes, that is correct.
So I was somewhat reluctant, still am reluctant, looking at the amendment, are really reluctant, so I agree with exactly what you said, Bill.
I still will point out, though, that overall, we did save the county some money. Maybe not as much as we intended to, but it was improving the lighting fixtures and we are having a savings.
Well, the road we went down was improving the lighting and the facility, for starters. And plus, you know, this company's making money, but they're a company and a business that makes money. They're not going to do this for free. And by getting, entering into this agreement, just looking at the data, like you say, we're going to save $150,000 over a 10-year period.
With better lighting.
Or just on the lighting. This is not electric. This is just on the lighting.
I just have a question of clarification, Mr. Chairman, to Bill. You mentioned the 50,000 over 15 years. What numbers were you using for that? I just, from my understanding and for people who are watching.
If you go through the document, Schedule A is the original part that we agreed to. And then in the, they called it an appendix. The pagination, I'm sorry, I don't have, it's called the appendix to Schedule A. So it modifies Schedule A. And I believe that's what we're voting on today because we have a signed agreement with this company.
Well, the reason I was asking is, I'm looking at Roger's memo or whoever put the memo together, and it said, "The difference for this amendment is $136 a month." And if I do that times 12 times 15, I get 24,000. And so I was just trying to figure out what number we were using to, so that we're all clear, so that we're not misleading somebody. And I'm not disputing that your calculation was in error, but I just don't, it's not the same calculation I'm getting.
Yeah, I was just using the numbers out of the appendices in the original Schedule A.
But you're mainly saying the difference, what we're asking for in the amendment, or what's being asked for in the amendment over the 15-year period?
Correct.
Yeah, so I come up with a different number, but I understand what you're saying.
But, you know, not only are we going to save on electricity, but you'll save on maintenance, because they take care of the maintenance on them, too, don't they?
Yeah, they not only take care of the maintenance, if they can't, the representative out here from the company, they'll hire a local contractor or they will actually pay our maintenance after.
Okay. You know, and I imagine in 15 years, that lighting technology will change again. And so it's, you know, it is amazing that we'll be gone from the old neon tubes to LEDs, the difference.
Well, Mr. Chairman, if I'm understanding from the memo, I guess it came from John Swartz to Dory, but the one that Roger is referencing, the amendment that we're being asked for is an additional $136 a month. And that comes out over the 15-years period, about $25,000.
That's the way I understood it.
So I would move that we sign the addendum to this agreement.
I'll second him.
Further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion to sign the agreement, amended agreement, signify the saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Reluctant aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
For one. Reluctant.
Let's see if the minutes reflect that.
That, no, no minute reflecting, reluctant. All right, we have a disgruntled patron in our community. How, what have you worked out?
Do you have that map? Oh, good, good, good. I'll just read what I typed up here and then we can go over it a little bit. High Plains Feed's right there on the corner. Mr. Dietz's complaints about Sherlock being used by High Plains Feed trucks and other commercial truck traffic. Most of the complaint revolves around the dust that this traffic causes. Some of the dust can be contributed to illegal dumping of excess grain to clean out the trailers on the roadway. Mr. Dietz also stated that he would like all truck traffic coming out of High Plains Feed to be mandated to turn south. This would keep them on the paved portion of Sherlock. I spoke then with, I spoke to both these gentlemen twice. I spoke to Mr. Tad Cavy from High Plains Feed. He said that illegal dumping is an issue. He's addressed in the past. He stated that he can and will address the trucks coming from High Plains Feed, but doesn't have control over the independent truckers. He also said that he will have his trucks turn left when exiting, but once again, his control is limited with dealing with independent truckers. I passed the illegal dumping issue on to Fannie County Sheriff's Office. I talked to a couple of different draghands and Mike Willen about the issue. And then doing a little background, I learned that that section of Sherlock from Railroad North to Damon Road is paved, okay? I guess there was a handshake agreement back in the day when High Plains Feed went in. That was paved so they could use that just to go in and out of the plant. They didn't really address anything coming from the north, but that was kind of the handshake agreement to keep residents happy on the north of that. Do they take that? I'm not sure. I haven't figured that out yet. And I think this was just a handshake agreement. I am never finding anything that. This is just talking to residents out there. So High Plains Feed is agreeable to keep their trucks using railroad, exiting south out of the plant. And they are agreeable to put a mandate on their truckers. You know how trucks will empty a little bit of grain, they'll clean out their hoppers, and you'll have a pile of grain on the road. Mr. Dietz thinks that's a large contributor to the dust issue, because urea has also hauled in and out of there. And urea gets filtered minutes ago, it can be, actually can be pretty unhealthy to breathe. So I do have a little agreement between them. I don't know, I guess we'll have to see how this progresses in the future. If the truckers continually go north, that would be a board decision, but I would not recommend making it a one-way road because, you know, if you can only go, you know.
South.
At least 50% of the trucks by Mr. Dietz's home, but where do you stop? Do you have to do that at Sherlock next or Chremelka or, I mean, where do you stop on, you know, we have county roads full of commerce, not only residents. That is an option. I've talked to them about dust suppression, but that is at their cost. The county, the only thing the county supplies for dust suppression at our cost is out at, what's the name? Niece?
Niece.
And that was an agreement to them to count. That's where that sits.
Comments, questions on this issue, guys?
I think Roger's done a nice job following through on this, and we'll, I'm sure we'll hear from Mr. Dietz if there's a lack of compliance.
We have, or there was an invitation to him to come today. He said he just couldn't make it.
So, Mr. Chairman, mine's just a clarification. So you've indicated then that you've talked to High Plains and Mr. Dietz about what High Plains has agreed to try to do to address this. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes.
As far as trucks dumping things on the road, you know, to me, grain's not a big deal, but the urea and other fertilizers and stuff, that should be able to be controlled. That should not be allowed, so. All I think we can do is just encourage the Sheriff Department to, if they get somebody doing that, fight them for it, so.
Yeah, like I said, I've talked to a couple of different officers, and it's kind of, by guessing, by golly, I mean, you know how it is, they pull up, they're there 30 seconds and done. So they'd have to sit on that location, I suppose.
That's not the only thing that gets dumped on the roads.
Oh, I know.
I mean, you'd drive the Hocom Lane, south out of Hocom, and, you know, it's partially populated down there, and you can see where they've opened traps and.
Was law enforcement even aware that this was an issue on?
I guess that they tried to address this years ago, several years ago. This is an oncoming theme we're seeing.
Hey, Roger, thank you very much. Appreciate you working the attention to that issue. Appreciate it very much.
Have a good day, gentlemen.
Board Governance is next on the agenda. Our work session items are on the screen. Any additions to that or guys comfortable with that?
Chairman, Dr. Clifford, I would like to add road improvements to our agenda. I still think we need to be forward-thinking about where can we put assets. You know, we've talked about parallel road versus third street north before, and I would like to discuss those.
Fair enough. Further additions, guys?
Well, mine's just simply a question. We heard Jeff say earlier today on our Spark conversation that we need to be ready to address where monies might go in the future. Should that be added or should, will that just simply be a part of our regular meetings?
Robert, are you still on the line? Do you have comment on that?
Yes, I still am. I would suggest that you could make a portion of this work session, if you would like to. Once again, the funding, potential funding amount is yet to be seen and the timing of it, so we may have some time. And I think maybe a recap of the things that you've accomplished and things that maybe fell a little short on, maybe be worth a discussion at the work session on the first.
That's fair enough. Make that note, please, Doris, for that second addition to the agenda.
Yes.
Okay.
All comfortable with it, guys? Excellent.
It looks like a two-day agenda, but.
I think we'll be there more than an hour.
Good job of the timing on you.
Yeah.
I would like to confirm the timing of that. Are we going to go into that work session directly following the, that morning's regular session?
I would think we should. Instead of taking an hour break or whatever before lunch.
I just wanted to confirm for notification purposes that we don't really have a set time. It'll just follow the.
That's what I would suggest.
Take a 15, 20-minute break and then proceed.
Why don't you just order a sandwich?
Oh, definitely we'll feed you, Dave.
Yeah, well. But this one, egg is.
Absolutely. Yes.
Yeah, you notice who was hungry?
Yep.
Okay.
I'm just saying, rather than lead here for lunch.
Oh, no, absolutely. We will order on ten.
And, Mr. Chairman, informally, we were talking before our meeting today. I don't know that the work session needs to be online because it's an informal, no-decision thing, but as we give our notice that there is a meeting, that people are welcome to come and attend to hear the conversation, but I don't know that it needs to be a Zoom thing.
Agree, that well said, and the public is invited, just like they are to all open meetings.
And if there'd be anybody in the back of the room, like a ex-mayor.
Is he still hiding back there?
City Commissioner, who has an interest in fireworks, will seek your input, so.
All right. Next on the agenda is our reorganization. How about that?
You ready for nominations?
Let's go for it.
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Dave Jones as the incoming chairman of the Fannie County Commission.
Clifford seconds.
Not that your vote counts anymore, Dave. All those in favor of the motion to, as David Jones being our new chairman in 2021, signify the saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried.
Thank you, for your lack of confidence. I heard some wavering eyes there.
No, no, no.
Larry and I were having a discussion before our meeting today briefly, if you can call it a discussion, of the, what I want to say, the chronological order of chairmanship. I was followed, I followed Larry last time, right or long? Who's next up in line?
I don't know.
I think Lon.
I don't keep track of that, so I don't know.
We need to, we need to kind of, if we're going to keep in that order, consider that for our vice chair.
Oh, is that how it went?
We used to move, now we don't.
Now we don't. That is my, well, Dave.
Are you willing to be a vice chair?
Dave, I am turning it over to you as our new leader.
Well, no, you're still in command, but I'm going to, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to offer a nomination, Commissioner Lon Pisny for vice chair.
I'll second. All those in favor of the motion, signify the saying aye.
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 Congratulations.
Oh, thank you.
And we still have to do the banks and the.
I don't have that in front of me.
Well, that's one of them, for sure. All of the banks that are licensed to do business in Fannie County will be the official banks, is that?
Depositories.
Depository, would that to work for a motion, Dory?
I believe so.
Okay, that's my motion.
Unless Robert has any input on that, but that's what you've done in the past.
Ben moved and seconded it, all the banks of Fannie County be the official depositories?
All of them that are licensed, are properly licensed.
And insured.
And insured. Discussion. All those in favor, signify the saying aye.
Aye.
The official newspaper.
I want to bring up again, as I did last year, just simply the interest that the Ulysses Newspaper has in being our official newspaper, just to keep that subject alive, because there's less and less people paying attention to the Telegram. I am concerned about notices. I don't know that it's wrong for us to continue with the Telegram being the official newspaper, but I don't know that people are seeing or receiving or knowing the notices. And I know Ulysses is making inroads into Fannie County as well, so I just want to keep that on the level of discussion.
And I agree with Lon, as Dr. Clifford. Dory, are we getting any relief from the state on notification? You do most of this work. I don't think people are paying attention, unfortunately, to the print media.
And the statutes say that it has to be a newspaper broadly circulated within the county, and I think that the Telegram probably does more than Ulysses, but I don't know, it is a struggle.
I thought the state was changing the statute on that, that where we could use electronic media, didn't they? I thought there was a bill presented several years ago.
I don't know about this last session, I mean, the last session, but before that, in one or two sessions, there was a movement to do that, but it's not been enacted.
Maybe that's something we should bring up with KLPG and our other associations and see if we can get this thing rolling again, because we're not the only ones that's got this problem.
And if KLPG would include that in its legislative policy, then we would be supporting that probably as we endorse their policies.
I have no objections to you guys' comments about Ulysses, but I don't know of anybody who takes the paper, Ulysses paper in Fannie County, so I think we are kind of trapped, personally.
There's a whole lot of people that take the current city paper.
We do make an effort also to put things on our website and share those on social media, just to try to get the word out more. I know I do that with elections. I, I know I do that with elections, I know we do that with, you know, some of the bids.
The legal notices are the tough ones.
Bigs and bids, yeah. And the only thing I think that we're probably not good about is like the resolutions that we publish, those don't really go on the website anywhere, but we could certainly get that updated as well. And we do try to accommodate.
Yeah.
We do need a motion, one way or the other, gentlemen.
Dr. Clifford, I'll move to maintain Garden City Telegram for another year as our official newspaper.
Thank you, Larry. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Board appointments. We've been kind of sticking with these for quite a number of years. Anybody have a comment on that?
I, I'd look for volunteer that wants to drive to Great Bend.
I pass that one off.
I know.
I ain't taking it back.
When do they meet, Larry?
Well, last year we didn't meet at all because of the virus, but I would imagine that they meet quarterly, I think usually is what it was, unless they had special meetings, but.
My problem was her quarterly was in Harvest.
Yeah.
Times, so I missed two of them.
Mr. Chairman, I, I certainly am more flexible with my schedule now where I wasn't before, and I was on the workforce board at one time, quite some time ago, but I would be willing to consider that unless somebody else really wants to be on it.
I sense a volunteer.
I heard the volunteer.
No, I just, if, I mean, I am volunteering, but if somebody else really has a passion and wants to be on that, certainly don't override that.
I'm, Mr. Chairman, or soon to be ex-Mr. Chairman, however I address you, I, I have a, I'm going to say a concern, I've brought it up before. We have some, some committees, if you will, out there that we support, that we don't hear from very frequently. And the example I used the last time, I'll use again today, that's economic development. When was the last time we got a report? And if we have somebody from the commission attending their meetings, perhaps they could give us a bit of a report.
Why are you picking on me?
Well, I'm not intending to, but, or, or if we appoint members to their board, would it be too much to ask if they either come and give us an update or the president? Or, I'm just using them as an example. The, uh, the, some others that we support financially don't do a very regular job of reporting either, and so I'm, I'm kind of wondering if we're not missing out on, on what's taking place in our county by not hearing from, from those, so.
That is my job to attend at Finy County Economic Development Committee meetings, and they have been strictly virtual for quite a while now, and as you know, I don't do Facebook, and that's where their meetings.
I under, I understand COVID has, has limited participation a lot. Hopefully that will be improved, but my, my question is incoming chairman, is it, does anybody have a, a burning desire to serve on a committee that you're not now on?
Dave, I, I didn't want to give Commissioner L. Jones nothing to do, but I was considering the CIP committee appointment, or I could make my schedule work to do the EcoDevo, Dwayne, if you wanted to give that up, so I would submit either of those for consideration.
You would, what, it's difficult to understand, I'm sorry, Bill, you, the.
CIP, Finy County, and the board. And economic development. He's, he's interested in economic development and the CIP committee. No, but he's in, I'm just saying that's what his interest is.
Can you just?
CIP does. Once or twice a year.
Okay.
It's up to you, I don't, I don't care, I'll be glad to hand it off if you want it, so. We have a monthly, absolutely one a month and then sometimes twice a month for special meetings.
So if you guys would make your, your desires known for Dory to jot down, we will make that happen. So the, if anybody's real interested in the library, they meet today at five o'clock. I, I have a plan on being there, but if somebody, the library has, board has term limits, I've exceeded that quite a ways, I've been, been on their board for eleven years, I think, something like that, so.
I believe the library, uh, I'm, I'm used to.
Yeah, as a chairman, that's what the statutes said.
She didn't want to give it up, so we let you keep it.
I don't care. Okay, if, if you take the library, I need to get you the packet information for this evening at five o'clock.
Oh, I mean, I got to work.
And what do you have that you want me to take? Or do you?
I, he was giving up the workforce development board.
All right, I.
And, and I said I would accept that if nobody else, you know, wanted to.
Okay, what do you want to give up?
Okay, who wants workforce development?
I, it's going to be on my plate.
Okay.
This is tougher decision than the budget. So.
So CIP, Larry, you're okay with Bill taking that?
The Waste Management Committee, how often does that need?
Yeah, it's not very much.
Is that something you want to get?
Well, no, well, I mean, it's fine to leave it on there. Yeah, I'm fine.
Library board.
Larry.
Larry will take that? Okay.
And Larry, I'll attend with you tonight and, but give, bring you a packet.
At five?
At five.
And Dr. Clifford took the economic development, is that correct?
Yeah.
I think Larry kept that, didn't he?
Did you keep CIP, Larry?
Yeah, you do.
Okay, let me have it.
Yeah, it's the fourth Wednesday.
Seven thirty.
Um, my, my question kind of relates to what Dave was saying, and, and I don't have any suggestions or, or recommendations, but in the spirit of what Dave was saying about the agencies that we funded, and even ones like, I just pay attention to the Convention Visitors Bureau, I'm not officially a board member or anything, and we've got several others where we attend meetings, we're not officially board members. Are we missing any organizations that we should be watching more closely, if you will? And I'm not trying to add responsibilities or add relationships, but just kind of a follow-up question of what Dave brought up a minute ago. Just for, for thought, I don't have, I don't have any recommendations or.
I'm not hearing any comments, so. Stick with this current list as modified.
All right.
You want me to keep going, huh? Okay. All righty. Monthly reports, Robert, I hope you're still partaking, do you have a report for us?
Sure, absolutely. As you heard from Jeff, we continue to work and clean up the Sparks brand, of course, being January, we are still going through a lot of the year-end processes, making sure that we transfer funds to reserve fund to accomplish some of the, oh, future projects that, that are needing to be done. I, I do know from, from Roger that we still have a hangup on one property for the farmland road project, that may take a while, but we still hope to let that sometime in the spring so we get that project rolling. We did meet last week on one of the new housing developments that is going to utilize a portion of our sewer district number three and talk about the logistics of that, and so we have a few things that we're trying to work out on, on what that agreement might look like and, and the approximate impact and any improvements that we need to do to that sewer system to accommodate, to accommodate that project. Then, of course, as, as both Colleen and Steve have alluded to, a, we're working on the logistics of a mass vaccination site, assumed maybe out of the, the fairgrounds, but that, that process is still ongoing, and we would anticipate, as Colleen alluded to also, that, that it would more than likely be utilized as a regional site, so those are, those are the few of the things that we're, we're working, working on and continue to work on. Any questions from the commission?
Mr. Chairman, not a question, but Robert referenced sewer district number three, and, and it is an issue for our subdivision because they're having maintenance issues and pump repair issues as we speak. And as of a week or two ago, they had an overnight run to Great Bend to get one pump or two replaced, and, and so our residents in Townsville Review are very concerned, and Roger and I've had some conversations, Robert and I've had some conversations, and I'm glad to hear that they're talking about an agreement and talking about improvements because there are ongoing issues from a maintenance standpoint in sewer district number three.
Correct, Commissioner, we continue to work those issues, we want to build reliability into that system prior to any future connectivity outside of the sewer district. And just as a, just as a little bit of a background, we, we anticipate that the area that will be connecting to sewer district number three will be independent as it will be within the city limits. So in essence, it will be an agreement, a contractual agreement between the sewer district number three and the city of Garden City, so they will not be incorporated into it. So, so as you can imagine, then there'll be connection fees and service fees that will be incorporated into that agreement, and, and we're just in the incipient stage of fleshing that out.
As long as we're on that topic, in District Two, we've had a lot of replacements because of the binding of the rotors, and we put some messaging out in that sewer district and with Southwind Country Club and the development company to try to eliminate those problems.
Yes, yes. Any other questions or concerns for me?
In, in our, in our sewer district, I see Larry asking some questions, in our sewer district, it is the fact that they're putting some mop heads and so forth into the, and, and we have identified that that, some of that's probably being done through the cleanouts, not through the house itself, because we couldn't figure out how in the world is that stuff getting in there. But they showed me the pictures a couple of weeks ago, and it's the same issue that they're having, I, I shouldn't say the same issue, it's doing the same thing to the pumps in our subdivision as it is in the Southwind subdivision, and that's what they're having to repair.
Who has access to the cleanouts?
I, we don't know, but that's the only way we can figure out that they're getting those things in there. But anyhow, it's causing ongoing repair issues, and, and yes, the people, I was, the county folks who I was talking to indicated similar things happening at Southwind.
Maybe put some type of secure lock system on those cleanout areas.
Roger's aware of that, and they're working on trying to identify and endpoint that.
Further questions, comments relating to administration?
I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, Dr. Clifford, I have a comment. Robert, maybe when you're available, the Flex Medical didn't equalize at the end of the year, and I'm just wondering, that's possible that people terminated their employment before they gave all their contributions. The childcare balanced out, which I expected, because that's sort of a pay-as-you-go system, but I, I understand the issues with Flex Medical, that the county could be holding the bag at the end of the year if somebody spent on medical expenses and then left the county before they made all the contributions. So if, if you're back looking at that number, just wondering if that's just something that would collaborate with, with the end-of-the-year contributions, or do we actually get stuck for seven thousand by ex-employees?
Good question, and I will follow up with Kelly on that, but from what I recall on that program, is that unless we sign specifically an agreement with the, with the employee that identifies that they would agree to have withheld from their final paycheck, any excess that they've drawn out of their 125 plan, that we do not have the authorization then to withhold that from their final payment, so yes, in essence, that does put the county into a, a negative balance on that, on the year end.
Yeah, and I, and I agree, all of us employers who offer those cafeteria plans are vulnerable to that. It's, it's not a large amount, but I guess if it was much larger, I, I think we would need to have those agreements in place to control that. Thanks, Robert.
Correct.
Thank you.
Robert, do you have any announcement officially on HR director?
Oh, yes, and I'm, I'm sorry, since we, we did go through, as Commissioner Dries pointed out, I believe, last week, the interview process, and we did appoint Kelly Nunyan as the County's new HR director. Very, very pleased with the appointment, and, and she's doing, continues to do a great job for us, and so now we're going through the process of retiring for her position.
And you had a couple of other positions you're working on, administration as well, is there any updates on those, or?
We did go through an interview last week, and at this point in time, we, we had about three or four good candidates that we will be looking at again yet towards the end of this week to make a determination on, on possible selection on those.
Great, thank you. Think further, Larry, is hold any sand?
I've got, I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
You've got HR, now you'll have payroll, budget advisor, or I don't know what, what the norm, or the, what you called it, and a, and an assistant to you. Is there any way we could combine some of those? Looks to me like we're hiring a lot of folks.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're going through a little bit of a transition, what we're looking at is a finance director who worked with the County's fiscal committee that I put together almost a year ago, and trying to make a determination for that position. We are borrowing an admin assistant right at the moment, and anticipate hiring for that as well, so right, right now, and I believe I'm, I don't recall whether I mentioned this specifically or not, I am not certain whether we will replace the communication specialists that we have within our office, as we've thrown some of the load onto Maggie Unruh and, and to Trey over in GIS on doing some of the website stuff, so that position I don't anticipate refilling at this point in time. So anyway, we're, we're doing a little bit of adjusting around to meet the needs of the county and, and looking for some strong, qualified candidates, especially as it relates to the finance director position that we have open. And recall that Beth was in that position and is doing a very fine job down at the JDC facility and continues to work in that capacity, that's, to me, was a better fit for that individual as well, so.
The finance, the, the finance director or the HR person couldn't do both the assistant administration work too?
You know, we're, we're, we're looking at, we're looking at that, HR truly needs a backup, usually the. Usually the ratio on HR is, industry ratio is somewhere around 125 to 150 people, employees to HR personnel, and we're sitting at that 300 mark. So in order to, for her to perform all the duties that she has, as well as benefits management and so forth, we do need somebody dedicated in that, but we may be able to cross-train for some payroll to provide some efficiency there.
Just looking for more efficiency.
As we all are, sir, yes.
All right, further questions for Robert? Hey, thank you for that report.
Thank you.
We'll start this time with Lon on your side.
I don't have anything with regard to meetings or things of that nature. The one thing that I did go to work on toward the end of last week was I received an alert from Jay Hall with KAC about Senate Bill 13, which is last year's 294, Bill 294, with regard to property tax. And it's a repeal of the tax lid, but a replacement of that requirement with notification requirements that puts the financial burden on the counties, and human resource burden on the counties as far as notifications and so forth. That bill did pass the Senate with one nay vote, and so it's on its way to the House. The disturbing thing, and the thing that I focused on as I contacted legislators and as KAC contacted legislators, is it has a retroactive effective date of January 1 of this year, January 1 of 2021. And that's troubling to KAC as well as to myself personally, that we would do something retroactively as we head into the budget process. But the contact I had with the couple legislators was that they were disappointed that KAC and the Kansas League municipalities did not come out in official opposition to the bill, and I think that was because they're trying to do an alternative, trying to do some amendments, and they were trying to keep their powder dry for that process. But they came out both neutral to the bill as our organizations representing cities and counties. But I think we'll see some activity in the House to try to amend that. As I pointed out, to one legislator who responded to me, is I hate to have one bad thing replaced with another bad thing with regard to county government. So that's what I'm working on, is some legislative things and standing on top of that.
Thank you. Dave?
Mr. Chairman, I don't have much. I did attend one of the Spark Thursday meetings, and reports that I stopped by to say goodbye to Uli, who had a reception and to honor her for 40 years of employment with Finy County. There's not too many that can brag about that career. She's, she's a remarkable lady, did a great job. Also had a phone call, but I'm going to hold up on a report on it because it involves a county surveyor, and that's going to come up in our conversation, and then I'll talk about that, that conversation then. So that's it.
Larry?
Attended the legislative coffee that Dr. Clifford emceed. I thought it was kind of fun to listen to. Other, you miss the interaction with legislators, you know, it's hard to type out questions as slow as I type. Also spoke to the High Plains Republican Women's Meeting. The ex-mayor and myself were there. Listened in on the KLPG call last Friday. I think we needed to get cranked up with them on these, some of these issues we have. That's it.
You heard about the chamber Zoom, and appreciate some of you coming on there. We had seven legislators, and I thought it had a real regional focus. And we surveyed the legislators after that, and they liked that approach, although many of them wanted to be in person, as did we. The GOP continues to have Zoom calls. We had a three-hour call last week. There's one with Senator Marshall this Thursday. If the commission's interested in that, I can share the link. I also discussed Senate Bill 13 with John Dahl, Senator Dahl, and it was interesting to get John's perspective. As you know, Adam Smith from Weskin is the House Tax Chair, and it'll end up in his committee. So I think that's where we may have some chance at amendment or years delay. The KOPG Zoom on Friday, Larry was on board, met with Hunter Carson about the housing issues and his interest in the 8th Street property, and I see that's on our February 1st agenda, so I'll bring some material to that conversation. And Scott Schwab had a very interesting testimony to the House Elections Committee. I don't know, Dory, if you were able to hear that or not live. I heard it recorded, and Scott reviewed all of the security, election security within Kansas, the audit trail, and we canvassers, of course, are aware of the process at our county level, but I thought he was very reassuring. Tatum Lee Hahn, who's replaced Leonard Mastroni, is on that committee, Elections Committee, and she had a number of questions regarding the, I'm blanking on, what's the software program, domain or dominance or dominion? And Scott was very reassuring about that, although there are about 14 counties with dominion systems in Kansas. So again, if you're interested this Thursday, Senator Marshall will be on a Zoom call that evening. Thank you.
Well, for my part, we had a Great Plains special meeting on a kind of quote emergency loan application. We took care of that one. Sparks meetings, been kind of a regular for these Thursday morning things. Did partake in interviews for the HR director position. I too stopped by to say adios to Uli and thank her for years of service. And I had a constituent who's upset with various truck issues up in the industrial park area, and I got to tour that area again, so we'll see how that develops down the road. That's it. Anything else to be brought up from the commission this morning?
Mr. Chairman, I think it was worth pointing out, we do have to.
Fair enough. Anything else, gentlemen? For the last time, I'm going to whack this hammer. Meeting adjourned.